This meeting of the Board of Education for September 24, 2012, is called to order. Welcome to everyone present and to our television viewers. All items that will be voted on have been posted as required by state law. This meeting has been televised live and will be replayed throughout the next two weeks. Please check the board website for replay times. Director Atkins and Director Knowles are absent this evening. Again, welcome everyone. We're going to start off with partnership recognition. So tonight we begin our quarterly recognition of community partners. Our partners are vital to the work of what we do here in Portland Public Schools and they're very much appreciated and without being called, you know, you see that folks are already coming through. Mr. Lolenzo Poe, Chief Equity Officer, and Dunya Minu, SES Senior Program Manager, are here to share with us about this important work.
We'll try to be very responsive, Mr. Chair. Chair Gonzalez, Board Members, Superintendent Smith, Lolenzo Poe, Chief Equity Officer and Partnership Director for Portland Public Schools. Tonight, again, we are taking the opportunity to recognize our partners who give of their time, resources, and human capital to help assist Portland Public Schools. As you are aware, we have a variety of partners who give tremendous amount of value to the district, and this is one of the opportunities we have to recognize those partners who give quite a bit to our district. It is really amazing at how much people really appreciate the opportunity to come before you and be recognized. Again, it's also a pleasure to witness the numbers of individuals and institutions that eagerly step forward to assist Portland Public and give up their time and resources to align with the mission of ensuring that all our children receive a quality education. Tonight, I want to recognize one of our governmental partners. While this partner, this governmental partnership, provides a number of partnerships across the district, tonight we do want to highlight one specific aspect of the partnership from the governmental body, and that is our SUN partnership, which for a number of years have provided necessary wraparound services to help our most struggling students improve their academic outcomes and to assist their families in supporting the schools and their students' academic growth. With that, I'd like to introduce Dunya Minu, who is our Educational and Community Partnership Senior Manager, who will introduce our recipients for tonight.
Thank you. Thank you. Good evening. It's really exciting to be able to come before you tonight and talk about something that I've had the pleasure of working with for over the last 10 years and being able to witness the growth of the SUN service system to where now there are 67 SUN community schools across Multnomah County, 36 of which are in Portland Public Schools. This has been possible because of the longstanding committed relationship between the county, the city, our sister school districts, Portland Public Schools, as well as our nonprofit SUN lead agencies. And what makes this partnership so successful is the shared vision that we all hold for student success. SUN aligns to the district priority action areas by supporting cultural transformation through the focus on equity and accountability, as well as providing individual student supports, rigorous and relevant programs, and collaborating with communities and with families. Last year, of the over 11,000 students served by SUN in PPS, 79% were on free and reduced lunch, and 70% were students of color. So it's with that, great pleasure that I'd like to introduce Joanne Fuller and Bill Scott, co-chairs of the SUN Coordinating Council, and then Kali Lad, also a member of the SUN Coordinating Council, will talk a little bit more in detail about the SUN partnership. So thank you.
I'm Bill Scott. This feels very familiar to me. I was thinking while I walked over here, I realized that I finished my service on the board just over 25 years ago. I just can't seem to, you know, give it up in terms of hanging around and being involved. And it has really been a great pleasure for the last few years to be a part of the SUN Service System Coordinating Council and to co-chair it with Joanne. On that council, which represents all the major players in the SUN system, I really represent the fact that it isn't just a governmental council, that I'm there to represent the business community and the community at large. I guess I'd say the biggest thing we'd want to say tonight is really thank you for your tremendous support of the system. The Portland Public Schools is probably our, you know, besides the county, the biggest and most active and engaged partner in the partnership, and that you really have treated the SUN partnership as part of your strategy for achieving all your goals as a district. And particularly want to acknowledge the superintendent and staff and the cooperative efforts that we get at every level, in addition to your willingness to find resources to keep not only sustain but expand the community school delivery system when you're having to cut a lot of other things. And I think that same kind of recognition has occurred among all the partners, and we're very, very grateful for it. We want to talk briefly about, I'm going to talk a little bit about how the system supports our shared priorities, and Joanne will talk a little bit about kind of what the system is today, and Kali about where we're headed. SUN is a collaboration of both government agencies and a lot of private organizations. We're in the process of greatly expanding our, for instance, our systemic partnership with the faith community and kind of other kinds of outreach like that. All of us recognize that we can't accomplish our missions by ourselves, and that educational success is important to every organization, but that the mission that you have to, for academic achievement is also, you know, very much aligned with the mission the county has around social supports and anti-poverty and city around recreation, community education, et cetera, et cetera. So that what we, the council tries to do is make it easy for all of you to fulfill your missions through the system. The goal of the partnership is really the success of all the students, and we really measure that in terms of academic outcomes. And from the very beginning, it's been treated as an equity focus, and that that's the closing the achievement gap. Reaching the right students that need the support the most has been the highest priority of the system. What we've tried to do is build a system that makes it possible at each site for the principal and staff there to work with the SUN coordinator to achieve what they need to do in their improvement plan at that school and the specific results that they need to have, and to engage the community and families in doing that. And we want you to think of SUN as your partners in engaging community and family around kind of all the issues that children have. And finally, to make sure that there are wraparound supports in place for every student that needs them, and we obviously aren't there yet, but we're on our way. The next slide is about the collective impact of SUN. We mentioned a couple things there. This is, Dunya gave you some statistic for Portland. The little dots with the lines is what the district averages are for students on free and reduced lunch, students of color, English language learners, and by district, I mean all six of our districts. And then what SUN is serving, as you can see, is greatly in excess of that. So we are reaching the target population. In the next slide, I think you can see that are the achievement levels that the students who participate in the system, and we measure basically students that have, you know, a continuous participation for a certain period of time, in general, on every measure tend to be exceeding what the expectations that have been set by the districts and the state. So that even though it's a very highly, you know, we are reaching the at-risk populations that we, the students that are part of it are succeeding. We have a lot of other great statistics that we haven't got time to give you tonight, but essentially, the, all the evidence that's coming out, and we've done some work with the high school populations, is showing that we're having a big impact on graduation rates and credit retrieval for high school students, as well as the kind of gradual academic achievement for the kids in the younger grades. So I'm turning it over to Joanne.
So, Joanne Fuller, I'm the Chief Operating Officer for Multnomah County, and on behalf of Multnomah County and the whole council, I really want to thank you for the deep partnership that we have with Portland Public Schools. We, you see here, the, all of the system collaborative partners. This is a joint decision-making partnership, so Lolenzo Poe very ably represents Portland Public on the SUN Coordinating Council and is a founding member of the council. And we, we think of the county as the managing partner of a partnership where all of the partners are making joint decisions to try to address, as Bill said, the mission of all of the partners together on that council. And on the next slide, you see just a little bit of information about the current status of our system. As you heard from Dunya, we're in 67 SUN schools. This system has both SUN school sites and then regional centers and culturally specific agencies that all wrap services around the schools so that we're able to meet the needs of families who are in poverty and who need developmental and other opportunities that can't be met at a SUN school delivery site, but can be met if they're connected to one, another one of our regional or culturally specific partners. We served 81,000 people, both adults and children, last year in that system, both the regional partners, the culturally specific agencies, and the SUN sites. And then we aligned and leveraged about $44 million in this system. So the system is hugely dependent on the in-kind and monetary contributions of everyone in the partnership to make it work. We could not make it work alone with the money that the city, the county, and the school districts put in. We need everybody's, leveraging all of our resources to make it happen. You have packets at your seats that give you more information if you want to look at them, and you have our lovely SUN yellow water bottles that we hope are, you take away as lovely parting gifts. And I'm going to turn it over to Kali to talk to you a little bit about where we're headed next.
Hi, Chair Gonzalez and Board of Members, Directors. My name is Kali Thorn Lad. I'm here on behalf of the Mayor's Office and behalf of the City of Portland. I want to, I brought a great reading for you, the Portland Plan, and I'm holding this up because SUN was an integral part of the Portland Plan, the vision we have for youth in this community. Our goal for thriving youth is that we want to ensure that youth ages 0 to 25, of all cultures and ethnicities and abilities and economic backgrounds, have the necessary support and opportunities to thrive, both as individuals and as contributors to healthy community and prosperous, sustainable economy. I think the SUN system is one of the few systems that we have that is helping us reach that goal and that vision, and that is why it's integral and is integrated into all of the Portland Plan. But we have a vision beyond that around sponsorship. We have what we think is ambitious, but we feel is attainable, and that is that we have SUN schools, SUN sponsors at every school throughout the districts, and not just Portland Public, but all districts that we have in the county. Bill has been working a lot on the effort to make every school a SUN school, and I'm going to give him a couple minutes just to say a few words about that.
Okay. Just to wrap up, I just, the, I mentioned earlier that you and the other districts and the county and city have stepped up to save schools that had grants expiring or were in trouble in terms of the children's levy and the city budget and your budgets, and also to expand schools. Kind of that's happened over the last three years, and we now realize that the political will seems to be there to keep this thing moving and expanding. So we formed a group, we did a while ago, but now we're going to feel like we're moving into a new phase, to really detail how would the system have to change if it were universal? What would it need to be that's different from the way it is? One of the things we realize is that the funding is kind of a terrible patchwork, and you're funding some of your sites 100%, and, you know, some of them are funded by the children's levy or the park bureaus running some of the programs, et cetera. We're kind of working out, kind of trying to work up a funding model that would say how much of what goes on there is really academic and should be easy for the school districts to justify, how much is recreation and community education, how much is social service and so on, and trying to form a model that would make it a more uniform system and make it easier for each of our sponsoring partners to defend the investment that they're making in SUN any place they needed to, and to show that it was rationalized likewise in terms of who's providing what part of the service. Some of that is history as well, as opposed to something that's been thought through from the beginning. So we're really kind of working from the ground up to try to say, all right, if we were inventing this system today, now that we know what we know and have all this experience, kind of what are the tweaks that we need to do? There is a, the, we, the providers are operating on seven-year contracts that are providing these things. Those contracts expire three years from now, or less than three years from now. So we will be working toward an RFP and a new cycle, and thinking that over the next five or 10 years, we'll keep moving toward 100% of our schools having SUN sites and going through the detailed changes that we would need to make, and be in a position to talk to you and the others about what additional, what are the choices that would have to be made about additional investments? What are sources of funds that haven't been tapped for this and so on? So that's just something for you to know is going on.
And so Bill's an active part of the cradle-to-career work that's focused on this, and the cradle-to-career work is about getting youth from cradle to career to be successful. There is a community schools collaborative that's focused on supporting youth. This is a key part of the collaborative. And we see the SUN community schools as a key piece to implement collective impact. A lot of people are talking about collective impact, but SUN has been doing collective impact since its genesis, so we're excited about that. I would say the other thing that is happening, we're trying to see the issues that are arising in our schools, and SUN is really trying to be strategic in addressing them. Some of those issues include chronic absenteeism, hunger, and disproportionate discipline. And so in the coming year, SUN is really grappling with how it as a system can begin to address the issues that our young people are facing in those areas.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Don't go away. Any questions, comments, or before we, we have a plaque that we want to present to you, and, but before we do that, if there's any...
I would just say thank you. This is one of our most tremendous partnerships, I think, and when we're talking about collective impact, SUN is the example. You can just feel us getting stronger and stronger, and I keep saying that our effort to have our SUN school coordinators and our principals really see themselves as, like this, but that's gotten stronger and stronger every year, and the more that gets tighter, the closer our out-of-school efforts are to making sure we're ensuring success in the classroom. So just thank you for a really deep partnership and getting our systems like really functioning like this. It's been very powerful.
So this is the plaque, and we're going to ask you to come forward. I just wanted to say that, you know, it's presented to SUN systems in recognition, appreciation of your contributions to the students, you know, their families and staff of Portland Public Schools. So if you can come forward, you know, we'll do the...
We all can take part in this.
Thank you.
(applause)
Bill?
Of course.
We have two people.
Okay, thank you.
Matt?
Thanks, Bobby.
Basic chairs, you want to play? So we're going to move on to, with our agenda, and we have the superintendent's report, so Superintendent Smith?
Good, yep. And it was really fun to honor our SUN partners as the beginning of our, of our school year. And actually, much of the superintendent's report is going to focus on collective impact of what it took for us, how many hands were part of launching our school year this year. So we had Project Community Care. This was our seventh year of doing it, and we had a record number of volunteers out helping to prepare our buildings and grounds for students to come back. 7,138 volunteers at 78 of our schools, and most of them gathered on Saturday, August 25th, to help welcome our students back. So our statistics, volunteers gathered up 589,000 pounds of debris and 23,300 pounds of trash, and the dollar value of the labor is estimated at 1.2 million, which is fabulous. Part of it is just the energy of people out preparing the grounds for to welcome students back. It's really great. We had Comcast donating a TV commercial, Nike making t-shirts, Clear Channel and Air One running a public service announcement, Season of Service giving marketing assistance, Starbucks doing marketing and sending out volunteers, Purdy donating paintbrushes, Coastwide Laboratory delivering supplies to schools, and Pacific Coast Fruit donating fruit for volunteers. And I'm going to read out all these partners, because part of what ends up being so impactful is how many people step up to get ready for our kids to come back to school, and it is awesome. So the folks that really mobilized volunteers for us, Amago Day, AC Portland, South Lake Church, Mormon Church, Agape Church, Concordia, University of Portland, Lewis and Clark, The Daisy Scouts, Portland General Electric, Amcoa Bank, Church of the Nazarene, Mission Church, Portland Christian Church, Mosaic Church, Kenton Neighborhood Association, the Central Bible Church, Eastside Christian Church, Northwest Regional Laboratory. And you see a big turnout of the faith communities to support this day in particular, and they've really been organizing across faith communities in order to build the turnout year on year, and it's been really fabulous. So just our heartfelt thanks to everyone who showed up for this day. It was really, it was awesome, and we're going to show you a little video of the volunteers who showed up.
Basically, we wanted to come and provide service to the community. We have, as you can see, I have kids in school, and so I really support helping out the schools and just wanted to serve. You know, whenever there's hard work to be done, you know, many hands make light work, and so the more people here, the faster it goes.
And I just thought, you know, I've graduated, and I haven't really done anything for Grant in these past few months, even though Grant did a lot for me for four years. So I thought I would just, you know, come for a couple hours, because what's a couple hours on a Saturday morning, and do something that's good for Grant, so.
I do a lot of volunteer work in the community because I think it's really important to give something back. I've always been blessed, and I think it's important to help out and beautify our community.
When I heard that they were going to come here to the school and just make the school as nicer, I'm like, hey, this is perfect. This is what I like to do. So that's why I came in.
I actually got a phone call. I heard that we were doing volunteer work here at Grant High School, so I thought I'd just drive by and lend a helping hand. Oh, well, obviously, education for our children is important, so it's all for the future of our children, so anything we could do to help.
So yay, thank you to all of our volunteers. So I mentioned Season of Service as one of the organizations that helped organize our faith communities. This is the Louis Palau organization, and they have been instrumental both in starting this entire Community Care Day, but also building it amongst the faith communities and really making it be something that people want to become a part of. So a special thanks to them for helping us build this. Another really great effort to have our students be able to return to school with the supplies they need is Schoolhouse Supplies, and we are really fortunate as a community to have this organization because they would make it really easy for people to become a part of, get our kids the tools they need to go back to school. This is Schoolhouse Supplies' 10th anniversary. They do a major effort both in a supply drive, but also engaging companies in loading backpacks. So we had 550 volunteers from partner companies who teamed up to pack thousands of backpacks by hand and distribute them to 26 partner schools during the first week of school. 14,000 students from Portland received the new backpacks filled with school supplies, thanks to the 28 Portland businesses. And I'm going to say the businesses get really competitive about like how fast they pack, how many backpacks they do, and it's really fun to go when they're distributing the backpacks because kids, as you see, are so excited to have a backpack of their own. And what color, they're looking ahead to see what color is in line by the time they get to the front of the line. It's really awesome. So just a huge thank you to Schoolhouse Supplies and to all the companies who participated in this, and also to, we have major KGW, On Point, Toyota, and the University of Phoenix also champion a huge supply drive that's part of what fuels this whole thing. So thank you to all of our partners who were part of the backpack effort and the school supply effort. It means something for our kids to go to school and have the tools they need to do the job they're going to school to do, so, and it means something to teachers. Teachers all get to go shop at Schoolhouse Supplies a couple times a year, load up their carts with all the supplies they need, and we know a lot of our teachers actually purchase supplies out of their own pockets. So it is a huge thing to get to go and get the supplies they need for their classroom. So thank you to all of our partners for being part of that. Boyce Elliott and Humboldt, actually, and we have Principal Molly Chun who's here today, they, this was their first year as a combined school community, and I'm just going to say it is tremendous energy. I visited with their staff today. I visited the school during the first week, and Molly toured me around, as did one of their PTA leaders. I can't tell you what great energy there is in a school that is now combining two school communities to become one. The teachers today were so energized about what they're learning from each other. They had a back-to-school parent night that had 8,000 people show up, lined up around the block to come in for their back-to-school parent night. They have t-shirts with their combined logos that show, that show, oh, they're just like awesome. They're just awesome symbolism of the two communities coming together, and kids that are totally energized. So, and the amount of what is there for those kids because they combined the two smaller communities and now have more to offer is just really moving. So Molly, thank you for your leadership. You have an incredible staff. They were just all so positive today. It was just really energizing to see and hear from all of them, and we're going to show you a little footage of their back-to-school. Oops, wrong one. Voter registration, we need Boyce Elliott.
And look at you. We fit. Can you believe it? All of us fit. I'm going to take a minute and look at this amazing sight of beautiful, brilliant children. Give yourselves a big round of applause.
We had an assembly today with all of Boyce Elliott Humboldt students, all together in the room for the first time with our new t-shirts, and we were a little nervous. It didn't all fit, but we did, and so it was awesome.
This was the first time that we have gathered as a Boyce Elliott Humboldt community. So it was the first time, almost, what, 560 kids were gathered with our brand-new t-shirts in the cafeteria, and today we were given backpacks by Chase, Idiva, and Schoolhouse Supplies. Every adult in this room who had their hands up believes in you, believes that you can achieve and you will achieve as students at Boyce Elliott Humboldt. You are here, and we are so proud of you, every single child in this room, from four years to 14 years old.
Everyone's just welcoming, and parents are excited, and kids are excited. Kids were a little nervous, I think, but they're getting used to it.
I like all the new kids and all the t-shirts. They're very nice. I like it also. It's like much bigger. with our brand-new T-shirts in the cafeteria. And today, we were given backpacks by Chase, Aidiva, and Schoolhouse Supplies.
Every adult in this room who had their hands up believes in you. Believes that you can achieve and you will achieve as students at Boise Elliott Humboldt. You are here and we are so proud of you. Every single child in this room, from four years to fourteen years old.
Everyone's just welcoming and parents are excited and kids are excited. Kids are a little nervous, I think, but they're getting used to it.
I like all the new kids and all the T-shirts are very nice. I like it also, it's like much bigger.
Much better playground.
It was very exciting. There was just tremendous energy. The kids are very excited to be here. The staff has worked so hard and very excited. It was just finally, we all got together, a day we've all been waiting for, for a long time. And it was tremendous, it was just tremendous.
It's nice and bigger, a lot bigger than Humboldt. And more teachers.
It feels great, it feels right, it feels like the right place for kids to be. It feels like the right place for me to be, for adults to be. It's a good, positive, I'm really excited about it.
There is no stopping us. There is nothing we cannot do at this point. We've had tremendous support from the district, tremendous support from our families and community, a great staff. There, there is no stopping us.
And I'm just gonna say, what even watching Molly watch this, like you get that this is just totally from her heart. And there is something like this, the leadership of Molly and Willie Pointsette, who is the two principals of the two schools that merged, they poured their heart into making this a successful merger and having these two communities come together. And Molly, it just shows, and your entire staff that just gave a tribute to you today in recognizing that and saying how positively you've led this whole transition. So, just on behalf of all of us, thank you so much. Okay, so another huge volunteer effort that we had this year, second year in a row for this one, was our reconnect, reconnection campaign. And this is one led by Joseline Begay, who is sitting right here, and Sue Ann Higgins. And what this is, is we take, get the list of every student who has not returned to Portland Public Schools in the fall that we had on our list in the spring that we anticipated should be back with us and entering school in the fall. It starts with all of their high schools who give them calls and do their own reach-out effort to try and reconnect those kids to school. So, we started with two hundred and seventy-four students who had not come back. And by the time we had our outreach weekend, we had like a hundred and fifty-five students still who remained to be contacted. We had a hundred and nineteen of those hundred and seventy-four who were reconnected through the beginning efforts to reach out to them. And then, we had a weekend where sixty volunteers were trained and went out from each high school campus and went door-to-door to welcome students back to Portland Public Schools. So, they got a personal contact. If people weren't home, they got something hung on their door saying, "We were looking for them and looking for them to come back to Portland Public Schools." It's a very powerful campaign. We had a number of students who came back to us this way last year, or we learned that they'd transferred and gone, you know, landed successfully someplace else. We knew where those kids were. So, this is, I think, making true on the every student by name. We are inviting you back, we are inviting you to finish, we are helping to figure out what is the way, what's the support you need in order to finish. So, here is a little clip from our outreach campaign, the reconnection campaign, from last weekend, a couple weekends ago. For the second year in a row, we're doing a reconnection campaign. For students who have not shown up on the first day of school, they will receive a phone call from our PPS staff. And this year, we're doing this in partnership with the Police Bureau, with our school resource officers, and with volunteers from the community who will accompany our staff on home visits if they continue to have absences. So, we're really working to make sure that every student finds their way to school this year and gets the support they need to stay in school.
So, what, so what number are we down to?
We're down to one fifty-five from Thursday.
And we started at what number?
We started at two seventy-four on nine eleven.
And then, down to?
So, we're down to one fifty-five between all nine schools.
It's good to see everybody. Obviously, we know that this is an important campaign and some important work that we're doing, just connecting with kids and families that are disconnected and not engaged. And so, this work is precious. It's a beautiful day to knock on doors, we have great weather. I'm excited, the energy's good. Jeffrey and I, we had great success. And it's just really good, you know, for families to know that PPS, we really do care. And we wanna make sure that students continue to move forward, especially those that have been disconnected or disengaged. We care about you. So, all the addresses are there. If you can just record all the information here.
Okay. Line are over. We went to talk to a parent and clearly, it was uncomfortable for them. And so, we, but we did get the other parent's number and she invited us to call him and discuss the kid with them. So, I think at least we can make a connection.
Yeah, I got the business cards.
I do have them.
Okay. Want them to go to an alternative school? I don't think that they have the resources to understand who to call, so.
I think they're gonna be able to make that connection. And you promised.
I think so. I think this was a good visit. I really do. We just finished eight visits and very positive. I feel very positive about what we did. We had a.
Good, she felt positive about what we did. That was kind of like halfway through. That was good, though. It's been an incredible campaign, though. Joseline, thank you. It was really, it was really energizing, I will say. And I was very impressed with, last year, it was our staff primarily who went out. And this year, we had volunteers, but many of the volunteers were staff from other departments. So, it was really a great mobilizing effort to make sure every one of our kids feels welcome back into our schools. So, another great thing, that's a new thing this year for us, is our teacher and principal mentor program. So, this, this year, we have a hundred and twenty first-year and second-year teachers and twelve new principals who are being mentored by seasoned teachers or principals who take a year off from their usual roles in order to coach colleagues. This is a big deal. So, here we have a teacher and a teacher mentor. This is paid for through an Oregon Department of Education grant. And part, as part of the grant, we'll also do a detailed analysis of the impact of the grant. But I will say that mentoring support has had good national kinds of track record in terms of really having teachers get a solid start in the teaching profession and looking to retain teachers. So, we're looking forward to seeing the impact for us. And Portland Tribune did a great article on our first-year teacher, Akeem Ballard, from Lane Middle School. So, check that out if you have not already. It was really nice coverage. Our high school schedule, we've had a lot of just interest in understanding what the impact of the change to our six-of-eight high school schedule was. And I'm gonna give you preliminary data because we don't have all of the, I mean, as of now, we don't have all the ads and drops and, you know, the sorting out that happens at the beginning of a school year. But what you have in front of you is three years of data for each campus that lets you know what number of classes students have, are taking at each campus in the ninth, tenth, eleventh, and twelfth grades. So, you end up getting to see over time. So, the first year you're looking at is ten-eleven, which we still had a seven-period day, and eleven-twelve, which was the first year of our six-of-eight schedule, and then, twelve-thirteen, which is this year. So, it lets you see what the trends are in terms of numbers of classes students are taking. Part of the going to the six-of-eight schedule was a budget reduction strategy to maintain program for students while we were making significant budget reductions. And what you see generally speaking on this, the trends are either equivalent or growing numbers of courses that are available to kids. But the trade, the downside is that it was a decrease in instructional time. So, one of the challenges as we're entering this next budget cycle is where do we go with that and where do we go in the future? So, some of this will be data that the district staffing team is looking at and using to figure out what are they, what recommendations do they make for our staffing formulas as we head into the next budget cycle. But I'm giving you this today to tee up your ability to look at it because on October eighth, we're gonna come back and do more in-depth discussion with the Office of High Schools and our Chief Academic Officer about high school schedules for this year. So, but it gives you a preliminary look at what the impact has been. The other, just broad stroke, is we do still have, across all of our high school campuses, both challenge and support courses offered. What they will be looking at more in detail is what are the numbers of those courses that we've got? So, IBAP, dual-credit opportunities, how has that been impacted in terms of what offerings we have for kids? So, we're gonna bring you some more data on that. And also, what kinds of support courses we're offering on each campus. So, on the eighth, at that work session, that's some of what will be coming back. Our preliminary enrollment numbers at the high school level, we are up by seven hundred and sixty-two students at the high school level for the same time last year. So, September fifteenth, at the count, we're up. And you know, for the last four years, we've been increasing at the lower grades, but we're, this is a new thing to be increasing at the high school, at the high school level. So, those are our preliminary, what are we seeing at the high school level? And then, the one piece of data that I thought I would share right now cuz it was just released today, was our news around SAT scores. So, and the state just released the SAT scores today. And students across Oregon are showing improvement. The good news for PPS was our, our scores relative to ourselves last year, our reading scores were up by thirteen points, our math scores were up by twelve points, our writing scores were up by eleven points from our own data last year. And that's data that's been relatively flat over many years. So, this is a good, yeah, it's a significant bump. And our PPS district average was thirty-two points higher than the state in reading, twenty-seven points higher than the state in math, and forty-two points higher than the state in writing. So, yahoo. So, that's a good, that's a good thing. So, nice, nice beginning news for, to start off the school year. The other high school news, and this one, I will just say that high school students have launched their voter registration drive. And actually, do you wanna say something about the voter registration drive? Anything, just that you're launching it?
Sure. Yeah, so, I know students around the district have been working on a voter registration drive. We have it going at Lincoln and Grant and I think a few other schools, but I know Lincoln and Grant are some of the biggest right now. And it's been going great. We're in a competition through the Bus Project, trying to win a trophy. Besides that, it's been great to get students involved, yeah.
And here we have our slideshow of the voter registration drive.
It's pajama day.
And the goal is to register two thousand students and adults by the October seventeenth deadline. So, so yahoo. Yeah, thank you for doing that, Olivia. And then, my final update. We, we had a bit of attention this last week on a job candidate whose references proved to be inaccurate. And then, after learning about the inaccuracy, we, both to ourselves and to our state licensing agency, we retracted the job offer. And I will just give a context of, we hire a lot of people every year and this was one of those that, and we hire a lot of excellent employees. What this, failure to catch this candidate, who did not represent herself accurately, has led us back to look at our own processes and procedures, which we have now engaged in. And so, we are engaged in the process of looking at other local districts and what kind of background screening they do. We're looking at Council Great City Schools, so other large urban districts, and what kind of background screening they do. We're looking, we're talking closely with our state licensing agency, who had also granted this candidate a license in the same time we had offered a job. But looking at what are, what are the screening mechanisms that they use and are there ones that we could adopt? So, and I've got a partnership of both our security services and someone in our human resources department that's leading the effort to look at how we tighten our practices and our checks and balances so that if, in fact, we have inaccurate representation in a job application, how we would spot that. So, we're in motion on that and I will keep you posted. So, that's my, my last thing. And my last is just, we've had really good energy starting the school year. So, I felt like I really wanted to take some time for you to feel it cuz we've been out, I went out and visited seventeen schools in the first week of school. It's the best. And people come back just so ready to be, you know, like fresh energy. What are they gonna accomplish? Teachers are, students are, parents are, everybody's just energized. And it's so wonderful to be out there. So, I wanted to share some of that with you visually and let you feel a little bit of that. So, it's been great.
Thank you. And we are a little bit behind schedule, but hopefully, we'll pick up some, some time in the process. So, we have a next student testimony. Ms. Houston, is there anybody signed up for student testimony? Thank you. We have citizen comment. This time, we have about twenty minutes for citizen comment. And do we have anybody signed up?
We do not.
No, thank you. So, next, we have a memorandum of understanding with Concordia University. And Superintendent Smith is going to introduce this item.
And actually, I'm gonna invite Bob Alexander to come on up and introduce. And you've heard much about this partnership and the development of the memo of understanding over a successive number of board meetings. We are really excited about this partnership. And we're officially and ceremoniously, actually, at the moment of bringing this for a decision. Bob.
Thank you for the record. My name is Bob Alexander. I'm Director of Planning and Asset Management. We have a number of folks with us tonight to help us talk about this relationship and this MOU that we have before us. I just wanted to say a few words, primarily for the benefit of the audience, to understand some of the key components of the MOU. Basic components of the MOU, it establishes master planning and programming of the Fabian site and future buildings. The partnership development also is one of those key components with capital and operations, talking about joint use of a fully modernized Fabian with the attendant wraparound services. It also identifies and outlines agreements permitting the joint use of each other's facilities, that is, Fabian and Concordia University. Financially, the contributions to each in this partnership, Concordia would be somewhere between seven and a half and fifteen million dollars. PPS, approximately twenty-five to twenty-seven million as part of this memorandum. The idea here was to really look at operations and funding of a number of wraparound services that I mentioned. But those would include a pre-K center, a health clinic, the Concordia's education department, and improved science labs. There is going to be a master planning process, of course, starting out with this, assuming the bond is successful in November. That the MOU contemplates then a joint planning process for the community, including students and teachers, as well as a number of citizens, as well as folks from Concordia and Fabian School. Next, following the one-year master planning process, there'd be capital partnership development, approximately thirty-six to forty-eight months. And then, the construction would begin twenty-four to forty-eight months after the master planning is complete. So, contemplate about fifty-three months total for, from the start of the process to completion. So, in a very quick summary, that's sort of the outline of the MOU that you have before you. I know the board has had a chance to see this in August and also this time. I'd like to go ahead and introduce LaShawn Lee, the Principal of Fabian, and Gary Weathers, the Executive Vice President of Concordia, to come forward. Following them, we will have a Fabian student and Katie Quick, a Concordia University Teacher Corps student. And following that, a Fabian teacher, Mary Harbort, and Timothy Kelsey, a Fabian parent. And then, finally, Chuck Schlimper, the President of Concordia University, with a board member, Chris Donaville, who's an entrepreneur as well. So, with that, I would like to turn this over to LaShawn and Gary.
Hello, everyone. I have the best neighbor in the world here. So, President Obama recently said this about education. If you're walking down the right path and you're willing to keep walking, eventually, you will make progress. And this is why our vibrant partnership with Concordia is so productive. The students and faculty have taken opportunity to create the right path. And they are determined to make sure that no child, parent, or community is left behind. That's a part of our joint mission. The relationship that we have forged over the past five years has afforded us the golden opportunity to achieve something that is within our grasp as a world-class model of a true, deep, lifelong partnership, the MOU. Each day, Concordia faculty, volunteers, tutors, student teachers walk there a hundred and two steps to our building and provide much-needed services to our children, as well as to our teachers. as to our teachers. The assistance Concordia students provide run the gamut from teaching recess games, duck, duck, goose, goose, to our four-year-olds, to a full-fledged Socrates team, to paying staff restrooms, to tutoring and teaching students. Regardless of the task, regardless of the problem, or regardless of the cost, Concordia University does what President Obama said about walking. You will make progress. I am here as a witness, and as the proudest principal in PPS besides Molly Chun, to tell you that we are making progress, arm in arm, as we walk this educational path together.
Bob has done a great job of laying out the elements of the memorandum of understanding. And what I'd like to do is just provide a little context. In the late nineteen eighties, the Concordia neighborhood, the home of Fabian School and Concordia University, was pretty close to ground zero when it came to gang activity. And in fact, on nice evenings, when I would drive home, just a block or two away from the campus, you would see young mothers holding the hands of their preschool kids. And then, you'd drive a few more blocks, get close to Alberta Park, and you would see gang-affiliated youth doing a very effective job of being intimidated. And I would spend the rest of the ride home wondering about the in-between. The in-between between preschool and late middle school and high school, what happens or what didn't happen? Now, today, you won't, you'd have to look pretty hard, pretty hard to find gang activity. It's there. You won't find it as readily apparent as it was. But there are some other signs that are particularly alarming, and LaShawn has shared them with us. And in particular, it's the academic performance of the middle school. And in fact, when you take a look at the academic performance of the eighth graders, the most recent tests for eleven and twelve, you find that reading is at fifty-eight percent meets or exceeds, meets or exceeds goal. Let's see, math is at fifty-two percent, and science is at forty-two percent. Those are not acceptable numbers. Now, the exciting thing about our partnership, that we call three to PhD, and LaShawn is the one who coined this term, age three to PhD, is that we get to start with a blank sheet of paper and write a new chapter in the saga, in the story of inner-city schools. And we've done some work. We've started working on our feasibility study, which is referenced in the MOU, and that's our effort to determine exactly how much money we can raise locally and nationally, philanthropically, to support this endeavor. And during our most recent discussions, we talked about the impact of third-grade reading levels, and a couple of members of our group were unfamiliar that some states use them to forecast prison beds. In fact, our, our Chief Development Officer, Kevin Matheny, who was here with us tonight, basically said, "That's an abomination. How can we be the neighbor of this school and not stand up and do something, not come forward?" And all of us at Concordia agree with that. We have to do something. And this is what is so exciting, so exciting as we write this next chapter, is that we have an opportunity to use the most effective architecture, a stellar collaboration between a principal of a grade school, outstanding leadership on the board and on the staff of Portland Public Schools, and a university that loves to do things differently and have an impact in the community. And together, what we get to do is, well, we get to stem the tide of that achievement gap and that declining achievement through programs like STEM, Science, Technology, Engineering, and Mathematics with new labs. We get to create something where young, new, and maybe slightly, slightly even fearful or apprehensive families feel invited in, even before they have their first child. So, they feel that Fabian, Concordia is their hub, is their place. And we get to be part of a program that prepares the most teachers in the state in a way where they are going to be student-centered, culturally competent, and have the highest level of expectations. Now, there's a program that we've put together with United Way. It's called Launchpad, and it focuses on middle schools. And LaShawn and I, with some evaluators from United Way, were at her campus recently, and we're walking down the hallway, just the two of us. And there was a wonderful little girl, she was maybe a third or a fourth grader, she had a pink dress on, she ran up and said hello to LaShawn in a way that I know it caused her heart to melt, and I didn't let on, but it melted my heart as well. And I realize why LaShawn always has a smile on her face, even given all of the challenges, as well as the opportunities at the school. And it dawned on me, in preparing these remarks, that she's the in-between. She's that third or fourth grader who is in-between. We have to do this for her. We have to do this for the little girl with the huge smile who's riding her bicycle right in front of my car, as I was leaving the campus today, who's probably a second grader. And we have to do it because we're already on the path. Let me tell you some good scores. And there are lots of good scores at Fabian, but fourth-grade reading levels have improved by five full percentage points. And by the way, the Concordia Teacher Corps has been doing one-on-one tutoring, literacy tutoring, with a grant from a Swiss foundation with the third grade. So, we're seeing these results already, and we know we are just at the beginning of an extraordinarily unique opportunity. And on behalf of all of us at Concordia, it's an op, it's an honor and a privilege to work with LaShawn and each one of you on what we think will be a nationally significant collaboration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, we have a short video for you.
At Concordia University, teacher education is the cornerstone of our academic purpose. We nurture the potential in our students so they can do the same in their classrooms. Strong bonds between Concordia University and Fabian School support student success.
Fabian is a special place, the most special place on earth. The teachers are dynamic, they are hard-working people, they are so invested and in tune with the students. And the children are great. They're creative, they have sparkles in their eyes, and they love to learn. The facilities, the scribe is poor, but our children are not poor in spirit, they're not poor in motivation, and they're not poor in creativity. I have over two hundred of Concordia student teachers, practicum students, and tutors in this building within a given school year.
We get to come over here to Fabian and get to experience actually implementing real lesson plans. So, we get this in-class experience with real kids, so that we know what kind of teachers we want to be. Concordia is just really great at finding leaders that might not know that they're leaders. And they give you this opportunity to come out and lead people.
Any successes we have derives from the success and the heart and the commitment of our students. Our students come to us wanting to serve, and it's our students that build our reputation.
What they're teaching is not just about theory, but it's also a balance of the practical application. We have real-life stories and experiences to share with our students.
We are on one campus. We feel like we're one school. This is deeper than a partnership. It started out as a partnership. We are family now. We have one mission in mind, and that's to serve our children as well as our community.
You get to experience life and bring it in to other people. That's amazing.
Concordia's teachers are the ones who care. I, I don't think there's anything more critical than for elementary school children, adolescent youth, high school youth, to, to have a teacher who is so committed to them and their welfare, that they can actually feel that in the classroom.
Concordia has been such a help to not only Fabian, but to me as well. Their students take time out of their busy schedules to come over and help out with things like the SUN program, fitness testing, and giving our teachers a hand in the classrooms. As for some of my personal experiences, last year, when I was in seventh grade, a student teacher from Concordia was assigned to my math class. He helped me understand problems in another way. He was also there to answer questions when the teacher was busy with another student. He helped give attention to our class of thirty-six. In my language arts class last year, we had another student teacher from Concordia. She was there from my classmates and I, when our class was going through some changes with our teacher. She was patient with all thirty-six of us and understood what we were going through. She taught us what we needed to know and made sure we understood it. Concordia students volunteer to come over in the afternoons and provide a safe after-school environment with activities through SUN School. The tutors help with things like organization, re-explaining concepts, and teaching us study skills. Concordia has been and always will be very important to Fabian. Even though we don't always see them, they are continuously trying to make our school a better place. They work throughout our building, inside and out. Having college students around makes me understand that one day, I can be in college fulfilling my dream. I'm so glad to be a part of this partnership. Imagining Fabian without Concordia would be like eating a peanut butter sandwich without the jelly.
Oh, wow, I'll follow that up. Okay. Hi, my name's Katie Quick. I'm a sophomore at Concordia University, and I was asked to speak on behalf of the Concordia Teacher Corps tutors. Some background information about myself, I grew up in a really small town in Northern California, and when I was looking at colleges, Concordia stood up to me for two reasons. One, that I could graduate in four years, opposed to five in California schools, and the other being the fact that Concordia gets their students in their classroom their first year, opposed to their junior and senior year. And that's made possible only by Concordia Teacher Corps and their partnership with Fabian. At the beginning of my freshman year last, which was last year, I was partnered with a first-grade teacher at Fabian, and at first, I was a little nervous, because I didn't know the school, I didn't know the area, but she kind of took me under her wing, and I really had a great experience. And when I came back from my summer vacation, the first thing I did was I emailed her and I said, "Jamie, when is the next time I can come and volunteer?" And she said, "How about the first day of school?" And so, I walked into her classroom, and she had the same students she had last year, this year, our second graders, and I walked in, and I was so excited to get back, and I walked in the door, and everybody was like, "Miss Katie, Miss Katie," and so excited to see me. And that made me feel good, because I was excited, and I was excited that they were excited. And I want to share with you one of my experiences, tutoring a struggling reader one-on-one. So, I took a reading coach class offered through Concordia last spring, and they paired us with struggling readers, and I was paired with a first grader. And the first day that we were together, she looked at me and she said, "Miss Katie, I don't like reading. It makes me feel stupid." And I just gave her a hug, and I told her, "We're going to change that." And by the end of the seven weeks that I had tutored with her, not only had her outlook on school changed from a negative one to a positive one, but she had improved tremendously. And so, that's just something I wanted to share with you, and I wanted to let you know that, like, my experience isn't a unique experience, and the fact that when I talked to my fellow tutors, they all had similar experiences tutoring one-on-one and tutoring in a classroom. And I actually asked some of my friends who were tutors how their tutoring experience had changed or affected them, and I have some quotes I'd like to read to you. Robin said, "It has solidified the fact that I want to be a teacher and helped me realize what grade I want to teach." Lindsay said, "It was a great opportunity to learn from other teachers and a great opportunity to work with kids without having the pressure of having the students all to myself." Rebecca said, "It makes me excited for my future job, and it makes me feel like I'm making an impact in these students' lives." So, that's just some of the things I wanted to share with you tonight, that our partnership with Fabian through Concordia Teacher Corps is an extremely positive partnership, and that I know that I have been making an impact in changing the lives of the students, but they have also made a tremendous impact in my life as well. So, I just wanted to share that with you.
Thank you both.
I'm Mary Harbald, and I have been a teacher at Fabian School for about fifteen years. In a world where everyone, especially educators, has been asked to do more with less, Concordia University has stepped in to fill that gap at Fabian School. As a Concordia graduate, adjunct, mentor of student teachers, and receiver of tutors, I have seen firsthand how Concordia and Fabian have built an indelible partnership where students from pre-K to graduate level receive the very best education and care. They provide additional space, resources, and manpower. This year, I have a third-grade student from another district that is at a pre-K level. Concordia is providing, through various course requirements, one-on-one tutoring and mentoring to help meet this student's very specific needs. Fabian School would be lost without our Concordia University partnership. Thank you.
And we're almost at the end of the testimony, people, right?
Okay, I understand that. I got to give my two minutes here. Good evening, I'm Chuck Schlimper. It's been my privilege to serve as President at Concordia for thirty years now. Three things, very quickly. One is, everything you've just heard is absolutely true. And we could regale you with, you know, four hours of stories. Secondly, one of the reasons I believe in programs like Cradle to Career, on which I serve on the council, is, is that I think the problems we, we have in communities and schools today cannot be solved by schools alone. They, we have to bring to bear on those situations, the entire community, and we take that role seriously at Concordia. That's a part of our commitment to helping our community become a great place. And finally, if we do this the right way, this will be a national model that everybody will look to, that was, that will say, "Really? They really did that?" That's what's going to happen here. Thank you for your support.
I was supposed to speak before you, by the way, but that's okay.
I have one of my two minutes.
Does that give me five? Hi, my name's Chris Donaville, and I'm on the Council of Trustees at Concordia and a partner, a relatively new partner at the university. And I had prepared some comments and thought that I would put all those away and maybe try to talk to you from the heart, in terms of why I'm here and why I'm involved with Concordia. And everything that this man said, by the way, is absolutely true. I've only been on board since last October, but since I've been there, I've seen some amazing things happen at this university and in the community. And to get involved, I remember how I got involved, actually, it was kind of by accident, because I had never been to Concordia. I live on the other side of town. And I'd been hearing about it for years and years, because I have a neighbor who, my daughter goes to school with her kids, and she is involved, she's on the development committee, and she's been saying, "You've got to go check this thing out." And I've been involved with SEI on the Board of Self-Enhancement, Inc., and Habitat for Humanity, and running offices for a Wall Street firm, that sort of thing. And I said, "Okay, one day, I'm going to do this." And I read an editorial, an op-ed piece that was written by Gary Withers, and it spoke about education, it talked about William Temple House, and not, nothing to do with Concordia, but I identified with every point that this man had to say, and I called him up cold, and I'm a former stockbroker, so I have no problem calling people cold. And I said, "I got to meet you, I have to talk to you," and he invited me to Concordia. When I set foot on that university and saw the library and saw all the amazing things happening, something happened inside of me. It was a spirit. And I can't explain it, but I knew I had to be involved with it. And I did exactly that. By the end of my tour, I looked at Gary, and I said, "How can I help? What can I do?" Now, to put into perspective what I was saying and why I identified with the school, I'm a native New Yorker, born in Harlem, USA, grew up on the Lower East Side of New York. If you know anything about that neighborhood, it's, when I grew up, it was pretty rough and tough. The demographic, you might say, is very similar to- The demographic, you might say, is very similar to the demographic at Fabian, in fact. My parents, one parent, my father, grew up in the segregated South in the thirties. The oldest of five. His dad died when he was nine years old. My dad worked his way through college selling newspapers and peanuts. And then not only worked his way through college, but helped each of his four siblings also go on and attend higher education. By the way, he ended up going to Morgan State, graduating number one in his class, and then going on to law school and had an amazing career, became a US Attorney. And I'm really proud of him, my number one role model. My mother, again, born in Harlem, USA, growing up on the Lower East Side, came to this country as an immigrant from the West Indies, first generation. I don't know if you knew that. And she too came here for education, similar to a lot of the folks at Fabian. And my mom always said, and so did my dad, that, you know, "You can achieve anything that you want, Chris, in life. You just have to work hard and we got to give you a good education." And that's what they worked for. So growing up on the Lower East Side, I was privileged. My parents were from a different mole. But still, I was in this neighborhood, this environment, where all the kids around me, the kids that I played with after school, were into all kinds of other things that I wasn't allowed to get involved with because my parents were there to grab me by the neck and sometimes pull me up to do my homework. And so I had the opportunity at a very young age, I went to private school and somehow, at age twelve, I got involved with the stock market through a program at school. And by the time I was fourteen, I still turned on to the stock market. I had my first job on Wall Street as a runner on the floor of the Stock Exchange before computers. And then went through and ended up going to Georgetown. And after Georgetown, went back and got my Masters at NYU and traveled around the country managing offices for Smith Barney. The interesting thing is that my mother still lives on the Lower East Side. I still go back to visit her often. And many of the people that I grew up with on the Lower East Side didn't achieve what I achieved. They didn't have the opportunity that I had. Many of them, in fact, friends of mine, are dead. Several are incarcerated. Many of these people, I would say, were seventy-five percent African-American, Hispanic, Latinos. And at the end of the day, I sat back and had to evaluate, "Well, how come me?", you know? I was lucky. I had an opportunity. I got an education. I had good parents, great parents, actually. And for me, the whole Concordia-Fabian University, I'm going to call it Fabian University to coin another word that LaShawn came up with. Opportunity, it's not just about opportunity. I mean, this is something that, we have four hundred-plus kids. And if you understand anything about Wall Street, we certainly learned leverage at a very young age in our industry. We can touch four hundred kids that can then go out and hopefully get exposed, get excited about something, whether it be Wall Street or the stock market or education because they're exposed to Concordia, and they can become contributing citizens. And they can change their course, and we can help them do that. And I see that not as an opportunity, but as my parents told me, being as fortunate I was, that was my responsibility, to go back and reach my hand down and grab the next person that wasn't as lucky as I was to have grown up. So I have a twelve-year-old daughter. She's at OES now. And she didn't get to experience all the fun things I did, you know, with the drug deals and all the other fun, exciting things. So she's really lucky. And so I'm doing the best that I can for her, but I still feel responsible, over and above that, for all these kids, these four hundred-plus kids that we can leverage and give them all an opportunity. And I think that's really our responsibility. So I would hope that you think about that in addition to all the beautiful buildings that we want to put up and all the other stuff. But it's really not about that. It's not about Concordia. It's not about the Council of Trustees. It's about those kids and the opportunities that we want to provide for them. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm thankful that you all spoke from your heart, by the way. I think that, you know, the testimony that we heard today, I think it was, one, very eloquent. I think, two, very inspiring. And not that I was trying to limit that part, it's just that I think that we want to be able to also move the agenda. We will now consider Resolution 4650, authorizing the superintendent to enter into a memorandum of understanding with Concordia University for master planning and replacement of Fabian K through eight school. Do I have a motion? A second?
So moved.
Director Morton moves and Director Sergeant seconds. The motion to adopt Resolution 4650. Ms. Houston, is there a citizen comment on this?
Yes, we have one, Tom Sinsek.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. My name is Tom Sinsek. I'm the president of the Northeast United Soccer Club in Northeast Portland. We serve twelve hundred kids without staff. And I'm in a funny place here because I was recently on faculty at Concordia. I love the place. I went to work at that place for many of the reasons that you've heard today. I spent a lot of time talking to LaShawn Lee and I love Fabian School. I love Portland Public Schools. It's why I moved to Portland. So this is just sort of a, in this big picture, this big project, which I bring full appreciation for what is being, the idea here. It's going to be a great opportunity for kids. But I'm doing my due diligence as a member of the local soccer club. Basically, we know that kids need after-school spaces and kids, places to play. Northeast United Soccer Club provides a lot of that for kids, and we want to continue to do that. One of the things that we've done was, as you know, keeping healthy helps education. It's been my core work for, ever since I was a student teacher in Battle Creek, Michigan. I am now a nurse. But basically, we have a common mission, PPS, Concordia University and Northeast United Soccer Club, that is to give kids opportunities. And I want to just make sure as we kind of go forward that the opportunities stay in all kinds, not just in academics, but in after-school activities and places to play. As you may know, there's a very shortage of fields and field spaces in Northeast Portland. I've been in direct communication with Bob Alexander around this issue. It's been great having him to talk about the possibilities here. But one of the things that was mentioned in the MOU is the play space and the athletic field as a part of this project. So I just wanted to kind of highlight, without really not much caution, because I know the conversation will go forward and it's a long-term process, that play space be reserved primarily, to start with, on PPS grounds for kids. And it's kind of an important thing. We have a lot of adult players out there now taking up a lot of spaces, you know? And it's hard to, I'm just doing my part, I serve kids. And I think giving kids that opportunity is an important thing. So as we look forward, as how this plan is developed, I'm asking that to be a consideration. And we certainly want to be a partner in the discussions. And I don't want to take up much more of your time. I did put some written testimony, but it was poorly written and poorly edited by me. So I think I delivered the main message, which is, I love the project. I want to just keep the idea of play space as a part of that. So thank you so much.
Thank you. So is there any board discussion?
I was just going to say that as I have been out talking to PTAs about the upcoming bond, when I mentioned this particular partnership, you can see people in the room get excited about it. I think they see that the mutual benefits, both for our students and for Concordia students, they see it as a strategic relationship and as a real example of what we can do going forward if we're smart in bringing community partners along. So that's been actually really fun. I always look forward to that part of my talk. And as Chuck mentioned, I do believe that this is going to be a national model. So I'm really excited about it.
I guess I just want to also say that, thank you actually to Principal LaShawn Lee because my guess is that there had to be an openness and a reaching out to faculty before it ever makes its way up either organization's food chain. So thank you to you and your staff and reaching out to the faculty of Concordia to make this happen because it'll be a national model, not because it's cool and not because we have brand-new buildings, but because it's breaking down those silos of what's best in education and truly bringing to bear the resources of the community. And so I just thank you, thank you both, Concordia and LaShawn, for understanding and having that vision because I'm sure that there are very long days and very tiring weeks to make that happen on top of all the other expectations we're doing. So thank you for leaning for example, by example. And thank you, Concordia, for being willing to recognize your role and responsibility and taking that seriously.
I have a quick comment. I hold the opinion that the challenges that we have within our community, the solutions to those challenges can be found actually within the community itself. And this is one of those, to me, it's a no-brainer. It's one of those organic relationships that now we have an opportunity as a school district and as a board to say, "Yeah, this makes sense. This is a solution that's not only innovative, but it's also something that makes a lot of sense to our community. This is going to serve the students at Fabian so well, their families and the families of the Concordia neighborhood. I couldn't be more excited to say yes to this MOU."
I'll just say thank you. Great presentation and I really appreciate all of your efforts.
Yeah, no, I think this will be an awesome program going forward. And similar to what Matt's saying, it's great to see that with limited resources, we're still finding ways to improve education for students in our district.
And actually, then, just since everybody is, I'm going to say thank you too. This has been a fabulous partnership on every level and just the passion and the values alignment that it just makes me really excited about what's possible going forward. And yes, thank you personally to every single person who's been a part of this and made it thrive. I feel like we're going to do great learning together as two institutions in this partnership. So thank you.
Yes, again, thank everyone that came and testified that it was, again, a great presentation. I think my colleagues already stated our heartfelt thanks, you know, for this partnership. Also, the benefits, I think, that have been outlined by folks. You know, when I first, I guess one of the first times that we had a formal presentation since I've been on the board here was some time back. I stated that, you know, my expectation or hope, I guess, for the rest of the schools of education locally is to follow that example that Concordia has set. Not that we don't have already participation from the schools of education locally, because there are some in terms of, you know, when they do their student teaching. But I think to start earlier, I think it was outlined by the student, here, it's important, if we are going to change the outcomes in the long run and the buy-in, I think, in terms of the teachers from the onset, make sure that, I went to a school, I graduated from also in education. And I remember when I went to the School of Education at what is now Texas A&amp;M at Corpus Christi. A lot of my fellow students were going in for the wrong reasons in some ways. One, because it was going to be steady job, and two, because, you know, they felt that it was a pushover degree, by the way. And I think that we do a disservice if we continue along that path. It's best, I think, for students of education to be exposed early on and see whether that's actually their calling. Because I think it is, it is a calling. I am grateful, I think, for your approach, I see, as a university, on this matter. I hope other local colleges look at that because I think that we are going to develop more culturally competent and more effective teachers in the long run. So the board will now vote on Resolution 4650. Unless there's some... The board will now vote on Resolution 4650. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Resolution 4650 is approved by a vote of five to zero, with two representatives voting.
Yes.
Congratulations. Thank you. So we now move on to Citizen Accountability Committee, Member Appointment and Charter. And Superintendent Smith, I think you're going to introduce this item with...
I am, and I'm going to ask Jim Owens, who's the Director of Capital Operations, to come up and present this. This is a follow-up to the charter for the Bond Citizens Oversight Committee that was presented to the board and discussed at the September tenth meeting. And then tonight, we actually bring to you the proposed membership. And I'll ask Jim to walk us through this.
Great. Thank you, Superintendent Smith. Good evening. My name is Jim Owens from the Office of School Modernization. During the board study session on September tenth, staff presented a draft charter for the proposed capital construction bond Citizen Accountability Committee for board review and discussion. Several board members provided feedback relative to that draft. And we've been able to incorporate those edits that have been made relative to the document. Tonight, we'll be asking you to approve and authorizing resolution to put the committee in place and also to be able to approve the proposed membership that is included in your board packages. I do want to point out, there is an error that I apologize for in your board packets. I think you got the corrected version, but an older version had been circulated earlier. And so this one reflects the comments that were made previously. And they're specific relative to the committee meetings being publicly noticed when they meet on a regular basis. It also includes provisions for superintendent to call meetings of the committee. And then some comments about the committee being able to look at facilities that are included in the capital construction, the proposed capital construction bond measure. The authorized resolution requests adoption of the charter to establish the committee and its charge. It also includes a proposed membership of seven individuals that fully meet or exceed the criteria in the charter. These are a mix of individuals with a good reputation in the community for fairness and transparency. In addition, the majority come with a combination of experience in building design, construction, construction financing, and auditing. In your board package, Attachment B, you'll find a summary of each of these members' biographies. And I think you'll agree that these are very impressive individuals who have a wealth of experience. And they've been identified in terms of initial terms. And per the charter, we were looking at two, three, and four-year periods. So those are actually noted in the packet that you have. The proposed chairman for the committee is Kevin Spellman. I think in looking at these individuals and the role, the charge that is included in the charter, that this broad base of experience they bring will serve the interests of the school board and the district extremely well. Three of the proposed members of the group of seven are actually here tonight. And I'd like to ask if they could raise their hands and just identify themselves. Kevin Spellman, who I mentioned is the chair, proposed chair, Louis Fontenot, and John Mollis. And gentlemen, thank you for coming this evening and being able to be here for this presentation. At this time, I'd like to answer any questions that you may have.
Are there any questions at this point? So we'll now consider Resolution 4651, a resolution of Monoma County School District Number One, J. Monoma County, Oregon, calling for creating a Portland Public School Capital Construction Bond Citizen Accountability Committee. Do I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Director Sergeant moves and Director Lyle seconds. Ms. Houston, is there any citizen comment to this resolution?
Yes, we have one, Mike Rosen.
I have two handouts. One is a red line of the current charter with suggested changes, and the other is just a quick summary of the key points that I wanted to make tonight.
So, identify yourself for the record. Just, I know you've been here before, so...
I was about to do that.
There's no need to repeat instructions. Thank you.
Hi. I'm Mike Rosen, and I'm currently the Legislative Chair for the Cleveland High School PTA. I have a sophomore that attends Cleveland, and I have two boys that graduated from Cleveland. And I'm currently working very hard to pass the Portland Public Schools Construction Bond. And I want to start out by thanking the board and the administration for their leadership on the bond up to this point, particularly the revision to the charter that provides for the Citizen Accountability Committee to report to you, the school board, versus the district superintendent. But there's still an important change that's needed. The Citizen Accountability Committee representation in its current structure is not representative of the community and key bond supporters, and it has a narrow focus on expenditures. The vision of the Long Range Facilities Plan extends far beyond fiscal accountability, though that's important. It talks about sustainability and deconstruction, rebuilding and repair. It talks about integral student involvement in planning and implementation and creating and implementing a 30-year program of rebuilding community ownership and trust in our schools. Is trust an issue? At every bond presentation, I'm asked why we should trust the district with a half a billion dollars for rebuilding schools. And I consistently answer that this is a new way of doing business as a community. It's a community-wide effort, and there will be a Citizens Accountability Committee that is representative of our diverse community interests. The Long Range Facility Plan defined guiding principles to be followed in all planning and decision-making, and these were developing partnerships, embracing sustainability, demonstrating fiscal responsibility, and practicing inclusivity. And my concern is that the current committee makeup is a traditional business-based approach. It's seven high-level business representatives that I believe are disconnected from the community who supports, works for, and will benefit from this 30-year effort. I would suggest seven steps to amend the charter that would address these concerns. First, require the committee to advise the board on building, deconstruction standards and practices, as well as state-of-the-art techniques in sustainable building, construction, and design. Expand the current size of the committee to include representatives from these categories: neighborhood associations, teachers, principals, students, deconstruction and materials, reuse trade, sustainable building design and construction trade, communities of color, and parents. The committee chair should be appointed by the committee. All committee meetings should allow for public testimony. The committee should select the bond program auditor. And in addition to quarterly audits, all materials of relevance to the oversight work of the committee should be provided to the committee, and the committee should determine the frequency of the meetings. And just in closing, I would say that the Salem Kaiser School District is well within the process of implementing a school construction bond for the very same issues we're dealing with: reconstruction, deconstruction, building new buildings. They have a Citizen Accountability Committee of 15, oh, this is it, and they represent all of the community, not just the building trades, and it's working very effectively. So, I expect that Portland Public Schools can follow the same path effectively. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So, at this point, we're opening it up for board discussion?
Mr. Owens, do you have a copy of the seven points in front of you?
That Mr. Rosen just said? I do not.
So, I'd love for you to maybe address some of them, because I, my understanding is that some of these we are doing already. Like, number four, all committee meetings should allow public testimony? I thought that that is the case.
Correct. The way the charter is currently written, it incorporates each of the meetings would be publicly noticed. So, the opportunity for public feedback during the committee meetings is incorporated into the document.
So, Mike, I don't know if you had the revised Accountability Charter, but it says that committee meetings shall be publicly noticed and include opportunity for public comment. So, I don't know if there's some others of these that we could maybe address right off the bat. For example, my sense is the committee should determine the frequency of their meetings. I don't imagine that would be an issue. So, anyway.
So, I guess, and I think I've said this before, that I've been really impressed with the level of folks that have been willing to lend their expertise to this, to this group. It's, it's been, I just heard it described as business as usual, but I do not remember a group with this level of expertise that's willing to help us with that. I have heard feedback about different people wanting this group represented or that group represented. And we can slice that literally just about every which way in our community, that whether it's communities of color, Portland Business Alliance, More Parents PTAs. And I guess, and the other comment I've heard people say is they wanted to have more teeth. And I, as I investigate what that means to them, I'm, we wind up kind of at a dead end in that people want, they don't want, they understand it's not right for an advisory committee to be hiring and firing contractors or stopping work or something like that. So, that's clearly the work of staff. But then, when they come back to, should they get to decide what work is done, and where do the citizens or the community get to provide input? And I see the elected folks here, like, if we appoint a committee, it's not representative by definition. We just picked people that we thought could serve or had the time to serve. And so, I guess I'm asking our community to look at the citizens here, seven of us that are elected with a student representative, to hold us accountable for that. That, to me, is the ultimate citizen committee or citizen oversight, and that's our responsibility. So, I see this group as really advising us, is staff doing the best practice that we would expect? And are we spending the money in a way that we promised our community? So, it is going to be that special expertise-heavy, because I have every, every confidence in our community that, as we rebuild Marysville, I've heard feedback about, why are they reporting the steps? Why are they doing this? And we're able to check in with staff and get back to folks about why that is. And that's, that's how I would expect it and hope, hope our community engages in this. So, I'm comfortable with this charter and this makeup. Very excited about the makeup.
My general sense is that we're going to have many, many opportunities for community engagement as we go, in terms of our visioning process, the ad-spec process, and all of the specific design teams at the school building level. So, I'm fairly comfortable with this group. I also, I suppose, feel that we could reserve the right to add to it if we find in the future that it isn't what we thought it was going to be. But I feel, and so, I guess I'd like to have that on the record, that we could do that. But at this point, I, you know, I actually, I'm excited when I look at the group that we're putting together because I do think this particular committee has a really specific goal, which is to ensure that our dollars are spent the way we said they were going to be spent and, and kind of track the dollars as we go. And I, I think that this is a committee that can do that for us. I mean, the fact that we have an auditor on the committee is exciting to me. The fact that we have folks who are really familiar with construction trades and practices is exciting to me. And again, I believe that we're going to have lots of opportunity for community input. Ultimately, one of the early changes we made to this committee is to have it report directly to the board rather than to the superintendent. And so, ultimately, I look at it as the Citizen Accountability Committee will be these seven people who report to another group of citizens who are accountable and to the public. I mean, that's our job. So, I guess I, in some ways, already look at it as we have, you know, a group of 14 or 15 folks who are going to be doing this work back out to the community. But, and having said that, I would like to say that I totally admire Mike Rosen and the work that he's done on this committee. And I want us to be cognizant that if he has this kind of a concern, there's others in the community who may have this concern as well. So, I think that we need to be open to further suggestions as we go. So...
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? The board will now vote on resolution... Excuse me?
I was actually...
I didn't hear. I'm sorry.
I was about to lean forward and just say a little something. I think just looking at the charter here, it's really clear about this, this committee having a very specific charge, and it is to make sure that the district's funds provided under this bond are provided in a way that the bond outlines, which is consistent with the principles in the Long Range Facilities Plan. There was a lot of community input in both the Long Range Plan and in the development of the bond. And so, I feel like this, this committee has a pretty narrow charter. There will be lots of opportunities for further input of our community members, all of the people we're talking about here, in terms of how these bonds, funds will be spent on specific projects and how different schools will be redeveloped. But I think, I think I appreciate the technical expertise of this committee and want to have them stay focused on how these dollars are spent in alignment with the requirements of the bond.
Thank you, Director Sargent. Anybody else that I'm looking? No, thank you. The board will now vote on resolution 4651. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes. All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Resolution 4651 is approved by a vote of five to zero, with two representatives voting.
Yes.
So, moving on, Appointment of Achievement Compact Advisory Committee, Superintendent Smith, you're going to introduce the staff?
Yes, and I'm going to ask Sue Anne Higgins, who is our Chief Academic Officer, and Amanda Whalen, Advisor to the Superintendent, to come up and walk us through the, our proposed members of our Achievement Compact Advisory Committee, and a little bit more about the origins of what this group will do.
Good evening. Amanda's just pulling the slides up. And so, we'll walk through the composition of the committee, as well as what the Senate bill describes the role of this compact to be. Amanda, would you like to start?
Hi. Okay, thanks.
Want me to do it manually?
Maybe. So, just briefly going back, we wanted to remind everyone again what the achievement compacts were. So, these are, achievement compacts are two-way partnerships that every K-12 district in the state is entering into with the Oregon Education Investment Board that look at targets and the strategies underneath those targets. Sorry. So, every district is required by statute to create an Achievement Compact Advisory Committee. This advisory committee is charged with, I'm going to read directly from the statute, "Developing plans for achieving the district's outcomes, measures of progress, goals, and targets expressed in an achievement compact, including methods of assessing and reporting progress toward the achievement of goals and targets, and recommending outcomes, measures of progress, goals, and targets to be contained in the district's achievement compact for the next fiscal year." So, this Achievement Compact Committee, Advisory Committee is required to create a set of recommendations that are then presented to the board as a report prior to February 1st, that will then be attached to the district's 2013-14 Achievement Compact. And the Achievement Compact Committee is also subject to public meeting laws. So, these will be publicly noticed. There will be time for public comment as part of it. Statute requires currently that the Achievement Compact Committee is comprised of employees from the district. So, these are recommended by the superintendent in collaboration with union leadership.
So, I would just like to point out, so, we worked with the PFSP, the PAT, and PAPSA groups to determine from leadership in those groups, as well as from central office staff, a constellation of folks that we feel give a broad representation underneath the...
Ms. Higgins, can you just explain? Those are a lot of acronyms. Can you remind our audience who those folks are?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, our school employees, Labor Union Group, our Portland Association of Teachers Group, our public, our Portland Public Schools Administrators Group, worked with district staff to determine how to have a strong foundation for this committee. And so, as a result, we have five teachers represented on the team. We have one classified staff member, three principals from each of our grade-level constellations, and three central office staff members. And so, and as Amanda said, by statute, the committee needs to be comprised of district staff. However, we do have four ex officio members, and so, at this time, these folks would also be advisory but are not formally named as members because the statute prohibits that currently.
Although I will say, this was a topic of hot discussion at the last OEIB meeting, specifically whether parents were to be represented as part of, as ex officio or official members. So, we know this is going to be a topic of conversation for that board and for upcoming. And we believed, number one, we wanted the voices, and number two, we wanted to include them now so that if they become made official, they're not starting behind the eight ball. They have been in the conversations from the beginning. So...
So, at this time, then, we recommend we would include one student from the Superintendent's Student Advisory Committee, or Superstat, one member from the Coalition of Communities of Color, one from the PTA, and one from the Portland Business Alliance, so that we would, again, further broaden the representatives and voices for this committee.
And then, I just also wanted to take this time to remind you once again that we are coming, in terms, that was, so, this committee is for the 2013-14 Achievement Compact, but we, in our, in, when you all voted on the Achievement Compact targets for the 2012-13 Achievement Compact, we specifically stated that we would be coming back in October to revise those targets based on the latest data. Wanted to point out that we'll be coming to the October 15th work session with recommendations around that, and then the vote would be October 29th.
Any questions in regards to the composition of the committee? Thank you.
The one other thing I would add is that we're also looking at a board liaison being assigned to this committee as well. So, that's not, it's just, that is the role, is board liaison. So, but you, in the same way, we've got, we've got board liaisons for all major work. We would assign a board liaison to this group.
So, we'll now consider resolution 4654, Appointment of Achievement Compact Committee. Do I have a motion and a second? Director Sargent moves, and Director Morton seconds, the adoption, to adopt resolution 4654. The adoption, to adopt resolution 4654. Ms. Houston, is there a citizen comment on this?
Yes, we have one, Carol Wire.
Hi. For the record, I'm Carol Wire. I'm Executive Director of the Oregon PTA. On behalf of the thousands of parents in PTA, in PPS, I want to thank you for thinking about including parents. We are very active with the Oregon Education Investment Board and have been working with them on the Achievement Compacts, and been very disappointed that parents have not been included. From our point of view, an Achievement Compact is something that's between a parent, a student, and a teacher. But this is a different kind of Achievement Compact. So, as Carol mentioned, the, I think the OEIB will be looking at changing the statute to include parents. So, we're very appreciative that you're, you're forward-thinking in doing this, and more voices at the table is, means more transparency, and, and we appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Is there any board discussion on this resolution?
I was just going to say, I'm really glad that Carol was here, because I, I mean, what I was most pleased about when I was reading through this is the fact that we have these ex officios. I know that for the regular board members, this is going to be a huge extra piece of responsibility, so I think we need to thank all of these folks up front for stepping up and being part of this. Then, I'm also grateful that the voices of parents, students, communities of color, and business community will be at the table at the same time. It's certainly appropriate. It's, it's kind of the, it takes a village, it takes all of us to make sure that our kids are going to succeed, so it makes sense, so.
Any other? Just got to make sure I look all around now. The board will now vote on resolution 4654. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Resolution 4654 is approved by a vote of five to zero, which still in representative Garcia voting.
Yes.
So, we have business agenda. The board will now consider remaining items on its business agenda, having already voted on resolution 4650, 4651, and 4654. I would like to highlight resolution 4652, which will appoint two new citizens, Dick Cherry and Tom Fuller, along with student member Haley Blashfield, to the Citizen Budget Review Committee. The Citizen Budget Review Committee will service our independent oversight committee to ensure tax dollars are used for purposes approved by local voters when they passed local option levy in May 2011. Ms. Houston, are there any changes to the business agenda?
No.
Do I have a motion and a second to adopt the business agenda?
So, move.
Director Belial moves.
Second.
And Director Sargent seconds. The adoption of the business agenda. Ms. Houston, is there any citizen comment on the business agenda?
No.
No. Is there any board discussion on this? The board will now vote on the business agenda. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please indicate by saying no. The business agenda is approved by a vote of six, I mean, five to, it's because I counted a student representative already, because she already said yes, no. But a vote of five to zero, which still in representative Garcia voting.
Yes.
Yes. Any more citizen comment tonight? Thank you. Do we have any announcements by board members? No? Okay. This meeting is adjourned.